Right, so I'm gonna
We're live.
Okay, I'm gonna call the March 11th meeting of the Highland Park Planning Board to Order. This meeting has been noticed, the, well, the meeting has been noticed with the Star Ledger and the Home News Tribune. In addition, notice of this meeting was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on March 8th and was posted on the Borough website at hpborough.com and on the bulletin board and the doors at Borough Hall. Um, alright, so Jen, roll call please.
Ms. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Brusher?
Here.
Ms. Hethazy? Mr. Hale?
Here.
Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Kluger? Mr. Lennaros? Mr. Malay? Mr. Nolan?
I'm here.
Mr. Pearlman?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah.
Mr. Constantine? And Mr. Koch?
Here.
Good year.
It looks like Alan's trying to get in, Alan Kluger.
Yeah, I'm here, do you hear me?
Oh, hi Alan.
Hi, sorry.
Hey Alan.
Okay, so you have Alan saying he's here.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, welcome everyone, so, um, let's see, and again, I guess there are people that may, from the public, that may have joined us either through this link or possibly through their, through dial-in. Um, so, our first order of business this evening is we do have minutes from our February 11th meeting, are there any comments or corrections from the board about those minutes?
Madam Chair, did we end up doing the statement, the open public meeting statement?
Oh, no, we didn't, yes, we did, oh no, well, yeah, I said that it was posted with all the different newspapers, yeah.
Sorry about that, my fault.
Oh geez, Roger.
I gotta, I gotta keep up.
You've heard it so many times, it doesn't sound new to you anymore.
I guess.
Okay, um, so, does anyone have any comments or corrections about our February 11th meeting minutes?
No comments.
Okay, well, if Alan has no comments, we know that they've, they've been combed over, so at this time, I would accept a motion to accept the, the minute, the meeting, the meeting minutes from February 11th. Do I have a motion?
Have a motion?
Motion from Alan Williams, do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Rebecca, okay Roger, do we do a voice vote or a roll call vote?
You can do a voice vote if it's easier for you.
Okay, so, all approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and then any abstentions?
I abstain.
Yeah, a few of us weren't.
Okay, so that was Jeffrey Pearlman, Steve Nolan, Alan Kluger, and did I hear?
Matt Hale.
And Matt Hale, abstained.
Got it.
Okay, great, so with that, I guess we are on to our first, uh, order of, our first hearing, which is a new case, which I believe, I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, is Jason, Jassen?
That's correct.
Jassen?
Yes.
LLC, which is a minor subdivision, which is currently the address of a single residence, which is at 236 South 11th Avenue, so at this time, I'll turn it over to Roger, Roger, you can have everyone introduce themselves and we'll get rolling.
Yes, Dominic, if you'd be kind enough to state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Dom Seminero, and I do represent the applicant.
Thank you, why don't you just briefly indicate what this application is about, and then we can swear in whatever witness you have, witnesses you have.
Would it be possible just to confirm that Mr. Fletcher has joined in? He was having to-
We see him on the screen.
I'm here.
Okay.
Before you do that, Dominic, one quick thing, I do believe that there's a report, I know there's a report, excuse me, from, uh, LRK, I'm not sure if it's Jim's report or Chris's, but nonetheless, they have reviewed the report, they reviewed the file, they've recommended that it be deemed complete, and I would suggest that the board, if you are in agreement, determine that it is also complete for purposes of the record.
So Jim, do you want to confirm that it is complete, I guess, and then Roger, do we do a roll call or just a, a voice vote?
I think you can get a motion and a voice vote would be good enough.
Okay, so-
Yeah.
Okay, so, hearing from our professionals that the application is indeed complete, I would accept a motion at this time, or actually, I will make the motion to, to say that the Jason LLC P 2019-2 minor subdivision is complete, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alan Williams, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And do we have any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, thank you Roger.
Camarino, Mr. Camarino, you're up.
Chairman members of the board, I do represent Justin LLC, this is a minor subdivision creating two conforming lots of 50 by 100, 50 by 100. It is not subject to any variances at this time, as it is compliant with the requirements of a buildable lot in each case. It does require the board to review the performance standards as they deal with the slope at the rear of this property, and also as to the facing of the garage of this property. It is the intent of the applicant to build two homes, one on each one of these lots, each to have four bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms. The architect, Mr. Patel, will address the issue of the garages, and how they fit into the master plan, how they comply, how they do meet the test in a, in a certain way of the 50%, but even if they don't, he will review how the house, which are new houses, built on each side of this location, have front-facing garages. The slope issue will be dealt with by Mr. Fletcher, and that appears to be the two required waivers, if that's the proper term, of these two performance standards. That being the case, I would ask that I call my first witness.
Certainly, who would you like that to be?
I'd like Mr. Paul Fletcher to be sworn in.
Sir, do you swear, swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name, and give us the location of your offices, please, for the record?
Certainly, it's Paul J. Fletcher, F.L.E.T.C.H.E.R., I have offices at 54 West Pond Road in Hopon.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, you are a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, are you not?
I am, also, also a professional planner.
And you're testifying in those capacities tonight?
Yes.
And you have been, I, I believe I'm right, you have been before this board previously, and been qualified in those areas, am I correct?
That is correct, several months ago.
I, I don't have any additional questions unless any member of the board does, he was previously qualified, and all of your licenses, I assume, remain in full force of effect?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Fletcher, if you would, I would like you first to address the two issues, the slope issue, and also the water runoff. Could you deal with those two first?
Certainly, there is some steep slopes on the site, it's on the north of the side, behind a retaining wall, an existing retaining wall, the retaining wall is approximately 10 feet from the property line, in order to put a 30-foot home on the property and comply with the side yard setbacks of 10 feet, it is necessary to move the retain, or construct a new retaining wall closer to the property line to allow some access beside the building. So that, that was the purpose and the necessity of disturbing a small area of steep slopes to provide access around the building.
I'm sorry to interrupt you already, Mr. Fletcher, but I just wanted to clarify one thing, what you're saying is where the current retaining wall is, would be moved closer to the property line, is what you're saying?
That, that is what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you make a determination as to the extent of that disturbance?
I believe it was 72 square feet.
Correct. What would be the implications of moving that retaining wall closer to the property line, and how would it be constructed?
It would be constructed from modular masonry blocks, what's commonly known as Allen block, it would become somewhat higher because it's going sort of up the slope, the, there would also be, at the suggestion of the engineer, a, I won't call it a fence, but sort of safety railing that will be installed on top of the wall.
The approximate height of the wall would be?
Between five and six feet.
Okay, what is the approximate height of the wall now, if you know?
I believe it's between three and four feet.
Okay. What was the condition of the existing wall versus that of a new wall?
It, it's functioning, but it's tired.
Okay. What would be the impact upon any runoff, stormwater runoff, as a result of moving the wall closer to the property line, if any?
I don't believe there'd be any impact on stormwater runoff.
Okay. Did you do calculations as it applies to stormwater runoff? As a result of construction of the-
Yes.
Did you submit a stormwater calculations to the board?
Yes, we did.
And as a result of doing those calculations, did you make a determination as to the effect of the constructing of the two homes as it affects stormwater runoff?
Yes, we found it was, there was a nominal increase, so the 100-year storm of .07 CFS cubic feet per second. The engineer has recommended that we provide stormwater mitigation in the forms of either a dry well, or perhaps rain barrels, we will work to the engineer's satisfaction to provide some stormwater mitigation, I can assure the board that there will be no adverse impact to neighboring properties.
By doing that, would that also create a improved situation just from the amount of runoff? Okay, and, the, just one more time, the, the property in the front tends to slope towards the road, does it not?
That's correct, and we're directing the runoff from, from the backyards to the road.
Okay, so that will again reduce the flow to the rear, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The, you're familiar with the engineer, Mr. Koch, the reporter, Mr. Koch, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay. In your review of that, of those reports, are there any items within that report that you feel that the applicant cannot comply with?
No, nothing here that cannot be, they're either statements of fact or suggestions that we will comply with.
I would at this point have no further questions now for Mr. Fletcher. I would like to reserve the right to call him again if necessary.
Of course.
Okay, thank you, I guess maybe we'll just ask if the board has any questions based on Mr. Fletcher's testimony at this time? I just have one, which is, so, I understand, because I made you clarify, that the, that the bound, that retaining wall is, is moving, and that you're still within your own setback on your side, do we know how far off that property to the right is from their property line, like, are they, do they meet their, their 10-foot standard?
I do not know.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Fletcher? Seeing none, okay, Mr. Seminero, why don't you, um-
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Madam Chair, if I can interrupt one second, I don't know, I don't see anybody as members of the public, but I'll defer to Jen.
I thought maybe we would wait till they, till we hear from several-
Sure, okay.
And then we'll open, and then, if there are any, if there is anyone-
In case I would call Vainu Patel, architect.
Sir, do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I do, I will.
Would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name, and give us the location of your offices, please, for the record?
Sure, V.I.A.N.U. Patel, P.A.T.E.L., the company name is VP Architectural Design LLC, the address of office is 200 Perrine Road, Suite 202, Old Bridge, New Jersey, 08857.
Thank you, sir.
Now, could you offer for us the credentials that you have?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in state of New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. I got my New Jersey license in 1987, I'm in my own practice since 2001, and I have done a lot of residential work, especially for this client, we did about four homes in Carteret, New Jersey.
I'd offer him as an architect.
I have no additional questions concerning his qualifications unless the board members do.
I think we're good.
Why don't you proceed?
Thank you.
Mr. Patel, as the architect on this project, you designed these two proposed homes, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And in designing them, you've designed them with front-facing garages, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Can you give us the basis for that, the decision in doing that, and how it impacts the neighborhood and the intent of the master plan?
Well, this is relatively narrow lot, and looking at, if you just refer to the floor plan, you know, we cannot fit even two-car garage, there'll be a single-car garage.
Okay, did you take into consideration the, the homes on either side of this, these proposed homes?
Yes, sir, yes.
And then looking at them, would you advise the board as to how the garages are on those homes on either side of this proposed site?
Yeah, they're front-facing garages, yes.
And are they relatively new homes on each side?
Yes.
Okay. Did you take into consideration the ability, because of the conforming lot size, to fit in any side entrance garages?
No, because this is a very narrow lot, to have a side entry garage, we need minimum, I would say, 25 feet for, for the turning radius of the cars.
Okay. As far as the setback of these particular, just these two particular proposed homes, they are presently, are they not, somewhere between two and three feet forward than compared to the homes on either side, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And was the intent to maintain as much of the rear recreational area for these two homes, anticipating, because of their closeness to Irving School, for example, that these homes and four bedrooms may have children?
Correct, yes.
Okay. From a site angle, would it be extremely or very little visible as to that two-feet difference on a site angle as to the building houses on either side?
Yeah, I would say it's really not much, if you see carefully, you may visualize, otherwise, nobody will notice that two-feet difference between the other houses.
Okay. Do you think there's any detriment to the master plan by building these two homes with the front-facing garages in light of what you've just testified to?
Yeah, I don't see any.
All right. As to the garages, I have nothing further at this moment, again, right to recall them, as to the front-facing garages.
Okay, was that the only thing that Mr. Patel was going to speak to then?
Well, as to those required items, yes, he may address the, the remaining items for the applicant to consider, but for now, I would like to stop with the required item.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Patel about the design at this time?
I do.
Yes.
Yes, Steve?
So, a question about the, the current structure, what's the setback of the front of the current structure, from the street? Structure that's there now?
I don't know if Mr. Singh could address that, I think maybe Mr. Fletcher may be able to address that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought he was speaking to the, to the setback of the proposed structures.
Yes, that, that is what he was addressing.
Okay, and I, and I was just asking what the setback is, just to-
Maybe I dropped the gun, perhaps he can answer that question.
It's okay, it's okay, it's-
I can answer it.
Mr. Singh, can you address that question? As the present house sits, is it in line with the homes on either side, is it forward or is it back?
The setback is 25.3 feet.
Of the current structure?
The current structure, yes.
Okay, and the setback for the proposed is about?
Is 20.
Correct.
And, and is there, you're saying the setback of the, the two houses next to it on either side is about 22 feet? Is that, is that right?
I don't know the exact setback of the adjoining properties.
Okay, okay.
But, but I believe Mr. Patel gave, someone just gave that testimony as to what the setback was on the houses on either side, and how those houses would now align, was that you, Mr. Patel?
I thought it was.
If I may, I believe that it is in the planner's report, he indicates 28 feet, and the approximate of this is 26 feet.
Okay, I, I guess my question is this, and I'll just get to my ultimate question, which is, I, I'm trying to get a sense of what the general setback counselor of the neighborhood is, and I realize that not every house, it's not all in a line, you know, that there's probably some back and forth, and trying to get a sense of where these two houses, these new, two new proposed houses would fit, would they be the most forward setting of any house on the street now, of that block, or would they be somewhere in the range, that, that's what I'm trying to get a sense of, I, I don't know the street personally very well, but that's, that's my question.
If I may, address a question to respond to that, Mr. Fletcher, or Mr. Patel, this, this block is made up of apartments, it's made up of old, older homes, it's made up of almost brand-new homes, based upon that, do you have anything that we can enlighten the board with as to the other homes on the block as to where they stand?
Right.
I do not, but I can quickly go on Google Earth and give you some ideas.
All right, would Mr. Fletcher be able to do that while we're dealing with any other questions?
Yes.
Um, yeah, there is a, an aerial view, but it's a little too obscured in the, in the materials that we have. Okay, so Mr. Fletcher, while, while he looks that up, does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Patel or Mr. Fletcher at this time?
May I ask, may I just interpose this for, to Mr. Nolan, since these are relatively new homes, probably built within like the last five years, the assumption was, was that the board in placing of these two new homes felt that that was essentially in uniform with other houses on the block, I don't know if that helps to answer the question, and whether that's a detriment.
So I would, I will interject and just say that the houses on either side are newer, I wouldn't say in the last five years, I would say 15 maybe years, and that the, that of course their massing affects this application, but that, you know, when we look for some uniformity, I think there's other elements of uniformity, there are front-facing garages on both of those other houses, there's a higher, you know, they're built to, like, let's say the two-and-a-half-story height, so there are lots of similarities, I, I think that that, my guess is that the, I drove, I mean, I drove the lot and tried to assess as best I, I can from the vantage that I had, that, that most likely those other two houses are more at that 25-foot line, and that this house will be somewhat in front of that, but I, it would be better if we had some actual testimony.
Well, I can represent to the board with the consent of the applicant, that if the board wants to move the house two feet back, that doesn't pose any problem for the applicant, it does though, as we brought testimony, it does reduce the area of recreation in the rear, that's all it does, but if the board wants to move it back two feet and take two feet off, off the backyard where the kids would play, then there's no objection to doing that.
Right, right, I, I guess my, my, my general concern is that there's a certain character to the neighborhood, and that if the houses, as they're developed, start to creep up, creep up towards the sidewalk, it changes the nature of the neighborhood, now, that, that may be something that's a benefit, as you point out, to have bigger backyards, that the lot is only what it is, and so, you can't make the lot bigger, but it's, it's something that I think we need to think about, that, that's all.
As I say, if that's what the board desires, the applicant will do it.
Yeah, Steve, I had walked the, you know, the block today, it is a very much a mixed, it's a mixed block, you know, like, like, is, you know, even older house, a newer house, and then these houses, then another new house, and across the street is, is multi-tenant residential, like, I don't know, there are apartments, or-
Well, I call them garden apartments.
Garden apartments, right, so, so it really is a mix, I don't know that, that it's an area that you would say you're going to get consistency, you know, out of, and, and it's also, there's a big drop-off, you know, you go down the hills when, after you leave, after you turn off of, off of Woodbridge over there, and so, and then it turns a little bit, so, so I don't know that you're going to get the sort of consistency you may see in other areas, you know, of town, you know, that we may be looking for.
That's actually very helpful, thank you.
And again, the grade difference, in other words, that house to the right, where they're saying that there's a, there's a retaining wall on these properties, with the five foot is up five, on the property to the left of these two properties, there's another wall, right, on their property, because it keeps dropping, so you do have a little bit of separation, I mean, I would worry about it encroaching on the street, you know, that it feels like it's too far forward, but again, right, I mean, I, I feel like they could make the argument to give, to give the space to the back of the house.
Right, and it is 20 feet, so, that, that's not, it's not on the sidewalk, I mean, it's- Right, and it is 20 feet, so that's not, it's not on the sidewalk, I mean, it's.
Matt, are you trying to get in there?
Yeah, I just, I went and looked and I just liked to Google Earth as well, and the two houses next to it, they actually seem to me to be jutting out farther than, than 236. So when I looked at it today, it seemed as if the houses on either side were closer to the street than 236 is now. So I guess 236 is going to move forward, but the others two seem to me to be as it exists now closer to the street, if that's all.
Okay, well, we'll wait for Mr. Fletcher to maybe give us some more definitive number. Do you have that yet or no?
Yes, I'm also looking at Google Earth. And clearly the, the homes on either side are in front of the, the existing home on 236.
Can you tell how much in front there?
Somewhere between. I can't get an accurate measurement. But I would also point out that let's see, one, third house going in the northerly direction can't be more than five feet from the front property line. The one beside that coming south is in line with the existing home immediately to our right.
So Mr. Fletcher, would, would, would it be fair to say that if these two houses were built at that 20 foot mark, they might be two feet in front of the house to the left and to the right of it? The front plane of the house?
Possibly.
Okay, but no, but maybe no more than two feet. Okay, all right.
I had a question about the garages. When you do the 50% test, I didn't recall, do you look at both sides of the block or only one side of the block?
They looked at the whole block.
I'm sorry, both sides of the street, both sides?
Yes.
My, it seems to be some confusion, maybe just in my interpretation. It's somewhat confusing as to ordinance, whether you should utilize both sides or only the one side. The plan, the recommendation to the borough was, as I read it, only the one side on which it is on. Somehow it's, it's somewhat being at times interpreted as both sides versus just the one side. I don't know whether, I'm, I'm not reading it right, or it needs a little clarification. But if it was just on the one side, it would be 50%.
Right, right, that's where I was going, was that, I, at least in this, no matter how you interpret it, I was looking, in this case, the fact that you have garden apartments across the street, which can't have, which, you know, I would like
Can't have a garage by nature.
Which don't have a garage by nature and they have parking in the rear, I would throw those out in this case and look at, you know, what's, they're only on the side of, of this applicant. And then if I would count the two new homes, you know, with front facing garages, I think it's, yeah, more than 50% have the front facing. And that now becomes the norm for that block once you add these two homes in. So that would be kind of my, my, my position, a little better than some of the other positions, you know, that were raised as to why it's okay, but I think in this case, in this case, that's the way I would look at it, and I wouldn't have an issue at all with the, with the, you know, with the front facing garage from the, from the calculation perspective.
I agree, and I also think in terms of the calculation, some blocks in Highland Park are very regimented, and this happens to be a somewhat odd block in terms of it curves and where the cross streets are. So I think you made a fair analysis there. Okay, is there anyone that has any specific?
Could we hear from Mr. Constantine? Because in the approved master plan, we have these garages on the side. It was a recommendation of, of the master plan.
I'm sorry, to have a garage?
On the side, it's somewhat back a little bit.
And you're saying you feel that this does meet or does not meet that, that recommendation?
I think it meets some of the recommendations of.
Okay, of the master plan. Thank you. Okay. I guess we're, is there anyone else that we, that you are having speak to us, Mr. Seminero?
What, what would be my intention, if the board feels necessary, would be to bring Mr. Patel back in addressing the planner's report to indicate that he and the applicant will consider all of the considered requests in proceeding forward. I know they've discussed a lot of them, but those are decisions that they will make later on in, in the actual building of it and the permit applications.
If you could just describe what you mean by
Yeah, let's go through them.
The considered, what do you mean? I mean, Jim has an eight-page report. There are items of discussion from, I think it's from, well, essentially from about four on, have some suggestions, I believe, or no, maybe it's, maybe it's a little bit later, but you know, there's things about the sidewalk and, you know, wanting, moving the sidewalk a little bit, trying to save a tree and can you tell me that, that the things that he's talking about your client is willing to do?
No, I don't want to mislead the board. They will be considered as they are considerations, they're not requirements. And, and the reason I say that is, is because to simply say at this moment, for example, trying to put a sidewalk around that tree, one's got to look and see where the roots go, how far they go, whether or not that's the most efficient and best way to do it. I mean, obviously, there's going to have to be a permit, and it's going to have the design for the sidewalk. So all of those type of things would have to be considered. I don't know that he can say tonight, yes, I'm going to do that.
Well, usually we get more agreement about, if not, there may be some outstanding questions, but in other words, we go through the planner's report and we make sure that anything that is reasonable, that can be agreed to, is agreed to. So Jim, do you want to maybe just walk us through? So that if there are things that we can quickly nip off the list, we nip off, if it's something like a tree that isn't unforeseen, that needs to be dealt with upon construction, then we understand what those things are?
Sure, sure. Let me first step back and just comment. We did provide a comment on the master plan in item 6.1. And actually, what's proposed is somewhat contrary to the recommendations in the master plan relative to the design recommendations for garage placement. The application that the board approved in December on South 7th actually embraced those recommendations, but had to ask for side yard variances in order to shift the garages, attached garages, single car garages like this twice as far back, but they floated into the side yard, which required those setback variances. I will also note though that this is a very unique context. You have two, two larger, wider homes and wider lots flanking this. And I think the board's comments about, I'll call it the the micro character of that immediate piece of streetscape is different. I didn't want to just mention one other thing that's worth consideration. I do think the homes should not protrude further as we recommend in the adjoining homes. But the way, they will not blend in because the way this street works is that, starting at the north, you have about a 65 foot wide lot. Then this, then this is sort of its own terrace at its own level because of the retaining walls on each side. And then the next house down, which is on a much wider lot, with the two car forward garage is there. So they are going to stand out on that middle tier on their own, and they will pop versus blend to the neighbors on their own. Then on the specific recommendations, there was a comment that we had in item 7.3 on tree removal, because the plans indicate that several, several trees are being removed, but there is not replacement plantings. And I think we could bundle this up perhaps, Dominic, we basically suggested that there's some ways to adjust the landscape plans and try to incorporate the trees that are not being provided that are required by ordinance.
Oh, absolutely, but that would be in conjunction with the shade tree commission. So that will be, that's what I meant by, I don't know.
That's what I'm talking about in terms of let's tick off the things that obviously you're going to agree to and that we require.
But that's required.
Right.
Yeah, so obviously, that's what I'm trying to imply. I don't know if that is something that you can agree to this evening. You got to sit down with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, you got to tell them what you may suggest, once you take a look. Then obviously, whatever they're going to say is going to have a great impact as to what you're going to do. That's, I'm not trying to tell you that this applicant wants to avoid any of those things. I'm just saying to you that I don't know that he this evening can say what you'd like him to say. I'm going to do that, yeah, I'm going to do that, yes, I'm going to do that. And only in this sense, okay? And that's why I think the Borough and the Planning Board made those as considerations, not requirements of the standards. But again, I don't want to give the impression that this is a man who's going to spend a lot of money, going to knock it down, put up retaining walls, another wall in the back, build two beautiful homes. He's, he's, he's not here to not do a lot of those things. I just don't know that he can commit this evening because if he did, and then something had to be changed, he'd have to come back, which doesn't seem to make sense to me, anyway.
Well, he could commit to the amount of trees and that would require him to come, to come back, obviously.
I, again, I'm not sure he could commit to the number of trees. For example, I know this may sound crazy, but suppose that the shade tree commission says, no, you can't put it there, the roots are going to do this, this and that. So now he'd be putting in less than what you want him to agree to this evening. And again, as, as to our planner, my only question would be, as I told you, the applicant will gladly move the house back. But from a planning standpoint, a decision has to be made. What's more important? A two feet differential and a lot more space or another two feet for, for people to enjoy the outdoors in their backyard? That's a planning decision, I guess. I, I don't know Mr. Constantine's opinion of that is, but will gladly move it back. It'll just reduce the backyard.
Can I just chime in, you know, with regard to, at least with regard to the trees, the landscaping? You know, it would seem to me that, that there could be a, a condition that indicates that your applicant, applicant will end up agreeing to work with the, the planner and the Shade Tree Commission in consideration of the tree removal and the landscaping plan to accommodate the concerns or something along that line.
Absolutely. A matter of fact, I, I feel that that's even a subsequent requirement. So absolutely, he will, he will do that with the planner and with the, the shade tree. Mr. Constantine is a very is a person who is very easy to deal with. I've dealt with Mr. Constantine in the past. I'm sure this applicant will, will value his opinion as to those things.
So Jim, aside from the trees, in terms of the front yard setback, is there anything you want to share with the board at this time about your, your recommendation about whether the two feet is better served in the front or the rear of the property?
I, I think it's better served with trying to have the alignment because the two feet, I understand in the rear yard, which already has rear yards that are pretty typical, so it's not as if, you know, you're losing 20 feet. But I think that the public has long expressed concerns about the way new homes fit into the character of existing neighborhoods. And I would rather err on the side of the public realm and the view of the home from the street and have it not jump out in front of the other homes because, because of the cheering, it is going to look, it's not going to blend with what's to the side, like you have in other situations. They're going to read as their own plateau. I would prefer not to let them, I think it's going to.
So your recommendation is from where the houses are located on the plan, you would prefer to see them push back to the backside of the property, two feet so that they align with the front. That's your recommendation?
Yes, that was our recommendation memo, yes.
The applicant will agree with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Jim, is there anything else? I'm just sort of looking through your. So in terms of the steep slopes, it was really just in regards to the retaining walls and moving that retaining wall?
Sounds like it. Unless Bruce has a different comment, but.
I know, Madam Chair and Roger, no, I didn't bring that issue up, so.
Okay, okay.
Jim, do you have anything further that you would like to point out to the board or, or are you comfortable with the items dealing with what amounts to your item number 7.0 and the fact that the alignment will be two feet back? You have a number of other items, but do you want to bring them out or are you comfortable with what you've heard?
It's just, it's item 7.4, the tree removal and replacement. Make sure that.
And 7.6.
Right.
The landscaping. And then 7.6 is the front yard setback, yes.
Yep.
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Seminero, does that conclude? That we're going to hear from on your behalf, okay, on your applicant's behalf?
Yes.
So, okay, so at this time, Jen, is there anyone from the public present?
No, we don't have anyone.
There's nobody from the public present, so I will theoretically open the public portion of the meeting for public comments, seeing that there is no one from the public wishing to speak, we will close the public portion and move back to whether there is any board comments or questions regarding the application for any of the professionals that we've heard from.
I had a question for, for Bruce. I think earlier, the applicant, I don't remember if it was Mr. Fletcher or Mr. Seminero, had said that they agreed with everything in your report or had no issue with everything in your report. Was there anything you're okay with, with that response? Or was there anything you needed further or some affirmative responses from them?
Mr. Fletcher and I have talked about this, and as long as it's on the record and means, as the comment in the resolution, then I would be fine with it.
Okay.
Okay, so I know Alan has stated clearly that he doesn't take issue with, so the, the issues that they have are basically the garage and it, and it kind of was, I guess, the front yard. Was there something else that, that that, that they are seeking relief from? Because this, it sounds like the steep slope is not an issue, so it's pretty much just the issue of the front facing garage. So I know Alan and has stated clearly that he feels that it's in keeping with the block. I, I'll throw out there that I also, I didn't walk the block, I drove the block and feel that actually these houses would be very much in keeping with the one house on the right, the two houses to the left of, of facing this house and that the houses directly across the street are garden apartments, which really are of a completely different nature and, and you couldn't compare. If there's anyone else who wants to sort of get their their two cents on the record, now, now would be a good time.
I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the attached garage, so that's, that's given.
As, as designed.
As designed, it, it's fine for this neighborhood. Seems to fit. Madam Chair, in fact, there are no additional comments, maybe it would be appropriate, and if there's a motion in favor, based upon what I've heard, it would talk about the inclusion of the comments by Bruce's report, the CME report. There was also specifically a reference to providing either a dry well or a rain barrel. That will be worked out, I guess, more or less in the field, that there would be an agreement that they would move the, the front yard back two feet on both of the houses. And that with regard to, excuse me, the planner report, that it would include that the items would, that they would work with the Shade Tree Commission as well as Mr. Constantine to incorporate appropriate landscaping plans in accordance, generally in accordance with items 7.5, 7.6.
And 7.4 with the shade tree?
Yeah, I mentioned the shade tree. Yeah, I mentioned the shade tree.
Okay, so does someone want to make that motion that Roger just sort of wrapped up?
A motion to approve as Roger has defined.
Okay, the motion made by Alan Williams, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Matt Hale. Jen, roll call, please.
Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Um, all right.
Thank you, members of the board.
Our portion with the the hearing of Justin LLC. Good luck.
Thank you.
I guess you'll be in touch with Mr. Constantine and you'll take it from there.
May I say something has nothing to do with this application? I grew up in Highland Park on South Eighth Avenue. So I had friends that I played with on South Tenth and South Eleventh. It does my heart good to see that those two streets are being developed the way they're being developed. It is a great improvement to that that area. So I congratulate anybody who had anything to do with that. I'm a quick check person, so I go by there all the time. And I say to myself, what a great improvement. So compliments to whoever deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hey, Mr. Semenero, you could have opened with that.
I could have, I could have.
Okay, well, thank, thank you. Okay, so thank you and good evening. Okay, so we're the only other items on our agenda for this evening would be basically our zoning building report from Scott and Rehabilitation Screening Committee, which we have not met, so we have nothing. Scott, I I think at our last meeting, Rebecca had a question for you about the five parking spots at the, I don't remember the address on Merrittan Avenue of the.
The former International Foods Market.
Yeah, what do we call, I know, that's what I was going to call it. But I was like, I don't know what we're currently calling it. So do you have any intel for us on that?
He said, he said he had, he had the spots secured. He was reaching out to the planner about that.
So Jim, you haven't heard anything?
We communicated, we need the agreement in writing for those parking spaces. So he.
Say that again. So he basically said, oh, I have them and you said I needed in writing?
He has a verbal for the spaces.
Do you know? Oh, so it's top secret? We don't know like where they're going to come from yet.
It looks like they may be at the drive cleaner.
That would be very handy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any, is the is the was the International Food Market coming back to that location? I I thought that's what they had said when we initially heard them or maybe one of the, one of the two or three times we had, we had heard them. But I guess now that it looks like they're both for rent.
Yeah, I don't remember that being.
Yeah, there is a, there is a similar, a similar type use that's exploring it right now.
Okay.
I don't want to share more because they're negotiation.
No problem.
It would be ideal and would really activate that front terrace. So I hope he's successful.
Okay, we'll hope so, too. So anything else, Scott, that you need?
No, nothing, nothing new coming along.
All right. Anybody else have any comments or questions or concerns?
As usual, I have three short questions.
Okay.
Has there been any progress on sidewalks on Madison Avenue?
No, other than I spoke, I spoke to the administrator and Terry said when the the weather breaks, which I think we're we're there.
It's broken.
Broke. Yeah, yeah, we're going to get out with the neighbors and and meet. And she was going to coordinate that through her office.
Okay. For Mr. Koch, is the stormwater system, have you received anything yet? No, I have not, Mr. Williams. Okay, and a question from Mr. Hale. You sent around, you asked Jennifer to send out that to the planning board and zoning board. I forwarded a copies to the Sustainable Highland Park and the Environmental Commission, who are interested in such things.
They.
In your.
Yeah, they had, they had received them as earlier, so great. But thank you for doing that.
Okay, see, you you've appeared to take eminent domain off of the the table as far as Uberies, Uberies, I guess, however it's pronounced. Can you comment as to why?
Um, so the two things.
Eminent domain ever on the table? I thought that was for the gun shop.
Yeah, I I I guess I'll give you an individual response and then maybe a collective response. I I would say that the council is not at all in favor of using eminent domain for a for a working existing business, that it's a a policy choice that we believe is is right above. I believe, and I think many on the council believe it's a policy choice to not use it on a on a existing, working, thriving business, which Uberie or thriving is a, you know, a decent business for Mr. Uberie. The other, the other issue is that that we currently don't have the requirements for eminent domain in on that property. And so in order for us to even consider it, to even think about it, would require a whole nother level of process that that may be different, Jim or Chris. But my understanding is that the as we as designated right now, even if we wanted to, we couldn't. And if we wanted to, it would require a significant amount of public hearing in order to to move that forward.
It seems to remember in the development, AVE Development Plan, it said eminent domain was was a tool we could use. Is that correct, Mr. Constantine?
Well, we we do have it a potential to use it. Doesn't mean that we will for properties that the gun and boat, its parking lot and those two small parcels on Denison that are tucked behind it. So that's the only place.
Right, the only that the the ones behind the the is kind of tucked behind the gun and boat, those we do there, but we don't elsewhere.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Correct.
Hey, anything else?
I was going to ask, I'm sorry, did I just jump on somebody? I was going to ask professionals whether, so I've seen some rumblings, not that it's been a big issue social media wise about the warehouse being built on Cedar Lane right over the Highland Park border. And I guess a number of people have commented, like, did the town know? If we did know, you know, what did we do about it? Or did we get involved or speak, you know, get involved in the application to talk about potential traffic issues, you know, coming into the Highland Park side or traffic at the River Road Cedar Lane intersection? So I do know that that I had asked Jen and she sent me a copy. I guess the town was notified of the the hearing that occurred about a year, a little more than a year ago. So I don't know whether, you know, what is the usual process for? Does it come to us? Does it come to council? Does it come to the administrator? You know, did we get involved at all, et cetera? I guess I stumped everybody.
I can tell you, I'm not aware of anything, so I have a simple answer. I don't know.
Right.
Same goes for me.
Right. I'll just say that I I don't have any recollection of ever seeing a notice. That does not mean it didn't come and it's Jen sent it. I'm sure it was there. I but I don't recall the council thinking about discussing or having it raised. Right, so I know Jen was able to get a copy. I don't know who exactly it went to initially, so there.
So Alan, when that, when that, just for clarification, when the that notice is sent, who is it specifically addressed to and copied to? Like which, like the planning board and the council?
I don't know who it went to. What I saw was the actual notice itself, but just that was very generic.
It would be, yeah, it would be if it's if it's within two, if the borough borough was within 200 feet, it would go to the clerk, borough clerk and and any property owners that are in Highland Park that are within the 200 feet, whoever they may be.
Only property owners, though, not just residential, you mean? Oh, any property owner. Yeah, yeah, I see. So Alan, are you saying that that you're wondering whether Highland Park should implement some sort of protocol in terms of like making like making a specific entity or board more aware when those things happen?
Yeah, just see what the process was. I mean, I do recall like years back, you know, sometimes at the end of meetings, we would talk about certain correspondents that that came in, you know, that may have been just on the outside of our our border. But since I had nothing else to do, I actually did track down the the video of that of the planning board hearing for that application. And they actually.
The Scadaway?
Edison, Edison. And they actually did have a discussion about potential traffic coming to the Highland Park side. And they said they actually are, the applicant is installing signs and said that they would instruct their truckers to turn right when they come out.
I was going to say turn right and not left into Highland Park.
Yes, and and they actually discussed the fact that they think that that the trucks will go right anyway, because that will be the quicker access to 287, the turnpike. And they don't necessarily want to get to the onto River Road. And there's also some signage that's there already that talks about like either trucks or certain traffic not being allowed at certain hours of the day. Like if you're coming into Highland Park. So maybe of certain size trucks. So they made a point of, they made a few jokes about how the Highland Park Police will certainly be there on the border, sitting there with their with their ticket books when the when the place first opens. And so.
Well, good, let's hope that scared them adequately to not make a left.
Right, so so it was it was addressed at the meeting. So I don't know whether, you know, anyone had, but just I just wanted to know just in case someone does come, you know, to the town or to some meeting and say, hey, heck, did you guys know about this? And, you know, did you think about getting involved to, you know, discuss any potential traffic issues? Thank you for doing that, Alan. It's good information to have. Appreciate it.
Can I just make a comment or a question to Alan? How many other, how many other planning and zoning board meetings do you just?
And Roger, may I ask you a question? Do you really want to know the answer to your question?
Yeah, I don't I don't sleep a lot, so, you know.
Sorry to hear that.
It's because you go to all these meetings, you don't sleep a lot. Well, it's easy when it's on video because you can, you can just, you know, scrub through to the couple minutes.
Tune in and tune out.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Needs to become a little sidebar in the at home section of the New York Times when they they focus on, you know, what do you do during the pandemic for the past year?
Yes, yes, I'll be on the second page of the of the Metropolitan section. There's this Star Ledger article about that this week, about the increase in civic participation as a result of Zoom meetings.
Yeah, we've had so many people at our meetings. It's overwhelming.
Well, the interesting, okay, we had talked about the interesting question is going to be like, however you define when COVID is over, will we continue having the Zoom as an option? Even if people are coming in conjunction with in person? So.
It's going to be a discussion, I think a lot of towns are going to have.
Yeah.
Like a hybrid, some sort of hybrid model.
Well, I think you could end up having a hybrid. You could end up saying that, you know, there are some towns that seem to think that this is a very good option. And now that that doesn't mean every town thinks it'd be the case, but some do.
All right.
So I have one other quick update on the South Seventh Street subdivision. We were supposed to report back to the board when we received this exhibit that shows the proposed homes and the setback garages in relation to four homes on either side. And we reminded the applicant this week in resolution compliance that we are still waiting for that exhibit. They said, oh, I thought we sent it. Said, no, Jen, we checked. I can't, I can't report on that yet, but hopefully next month.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing nothing at this time, I would accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Everybody have a good rest of the week. Take care.
Yes, all right. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.
All right.